We'll call this council meeting Monday, October 18th to order. Invitation given by Mr. Stewart and the pledge allegiance by Ms. Tolliver.
Let's pray. My Father in heaven, we thank you for this day we've had and thank for many blessings you've given us. We ask that you watch over these proceedings and they'll be pleasing in your sight. We ask that you watch over the citizens and employees of Scottsboro as they go about their daily lives. Watch over the military, bring them home safely to their families. God guide and direct us to an end when we all come to thee. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
We do a roll call.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. Ashburn.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Ms. Tolliver.
Here.
Mr. Dahl. You have a forum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll move first to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we'll move to approval of the previous minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on those? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. It's no old business, so we'll move straight into new business. First thing is consider the city of Scottsboro cost sharing for the Tennessee River Economic Impact Study. The amount will total be $2,275. It'll be split between other cities and the county. This amount would come out of the surplus from the original budget. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Two, consider the sponsorship request for the Airport Marine High School Fishing Trail. This will be February 26th and 27th of next year. This is $3,000 that would come out of the tourism grant. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Three, consider the sponsorship request for the Southern All-Star Catfish Series. This will be May 14th of next year. This is an amount of $5,500 that would come out of tourism grant. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Four, announce the Architectural Review Board appointments. We had three openings and we have one name. Jane Bergman has requested to be reappointed. So, hearing that, do I have a motion? Well, first I need to accept names to... Anyone wants to make a motion to put a name on the board?
I would like to put Jane Bergman on.
Okay, thank you. Any other names? Hearing none, we'll vote. Well, first... Now, the motion verse, they're just the names.
You just made the motion.
Alright. Do I have a second for Ms. Bergman then?
I'll second.
Alright. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll save delegations and reports after the work session. So, that will conclude the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? We'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned. We'll move straight to the work session in about one minute. Don't even unbuckle your seatbelt here. We'll call this work session Monday, October 18th to order. We'll move to number one. First thing is the public hearing for alcohol license for the Quick Stop. This is the time and place for a public hearing for alcohol license for the Quick Stop. Anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? Ms. Kenner, we do investigative report.
The name of the applicant is Scottsboro Quick Stop LLC, Thucum Malampin. Type of license is retail beer off premises. Location is 802 South Broad. Background check, no record indicated. The survey of residences and businesses indicate five, no objections. The nearest school, church, and residence situations are noted. The floor space requirements are not applicable. The license application is in order. The health, fire, building, and zoning verifications comply.
Thank you, Ms. Kenner. This will conclude the public hearing. We will move this to next week's meeting, October 25th, for a vote. Thank you. Number two, discuss the boat launch at Meek Creek. Mr. Little?
Good evening. I think each of you have a site plan. This is for the Meek Creek Boat Launch area. The Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources approached the city back in the spring of last year and asked about a partnership to improve the boat launch down at Meek Creek. And I'll go through this pretty quick. If you've got any questions, you can stop me or slow me down, but mainly it's four things that they were wanting to improve. Widening the existing road going in, if you've been down there, it's about a one lane when you come in and out. So, they're wanting to widen that road going in. They're wanting to add about 15 more spaces for parking. They're wanting to do a new boat launch. It'd be a double ramp where actually two boats could back in. And then they're wanting to make the existing floating dock that we have down there ADA compliant. So, that's mainly the four things that they've requested to do. The budget is half a million dollars and they're asking for a $125,000 commitment from the city is what they're looking for.
Everyone has this in their pocket. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Little on this? Mr. Little, what's the timeline on this?
I want to do it next... Well, it'll be this fiscal year now.
Okay. But far as... When do we have to get this approved before... When do we need to let them know if we're gonna...
Probably the next couple of months.
Okay.
Josh, is this boat launch used a lot?
I don't know how much it's used. The times I've been down there in the fishing season, it's pretty crowded.
Yeah.
But I don't know the average or...
I've just never paid much attention to it. It's usually pretty crowded.
Yeah.
And, Mr. President, if I could, a lot of fishermen also use this route for tournaments at Goose Pond.
Okay.
It's used for... It's not just Goose Pond, it's used here too.
The money's available through this fiscal year, so if we... I think we let them know by, you know, the first of the year.
Okay.
We can move forward with it with them.
We're gonna move this to a future work session.
Okay.
And will give us time to discuss it and see what kind of money we have in the budget for it. Thank you, Mr. Little. Number three, discuss the rural trail program grant request. Mayor, Mr. Little, which one?
I'll start and I think Mr. Little may have some additional. This is the RTP program. This grant normally is in March. We were notified that they had an offering in October and in checking with the DECA this past week, they do not know if there's gonna be another RTP offering in March or not. This is the one that would extend the trail from Veterans Memorial Park to Roseberry. It would be the first segment. It'll be a $400,000 grant with 20% match from the city. It would actually be $125,000 in kind from the city. Little is anything else that I missed?
So, the whole match would be in kind? It wouldn't be... Or we still have to...
The in-kind part was the pedestrian bridge and the two arch paths. Also do that for your insurance, but it would be expenses for the material and that.
Do we have a cost on what it would cost? That's the cost for the materials?
That's not the materials. That would be laboring material. The materials are looking at about $8,000.
Okay. About $8,000 for materials. Okay. And hearing this, this is something needs to be approved or not approved soon?
It does. The application is already going in and they need the city's authorization before they can go any further.
Anyone else having questions on this? Hearing none, we'll put that on next week's meeting then. Discuss the rezoning land on Industrial Park Drive. Mr. Light?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, the mayor, Mr. Kenner. Of course, y'all recall I was here a few weeks ago regarding this property that the industrial board owns down in the Goose Pond area. And with, of course, with y'all's assistance, we were able to get the rezoning... Excuse me, get it annexed into the city of Scottsboro. As I understand the process though, that comes in automatically as an R1. And so, we went to the planning commission a couple of weeks ago, October the 5th, and sought their approval to change the R1 designation to a C3 commercial. We think it's more applicable for this property and this location. And residential just wouldn't really fit very well there in an industrial park. But with the assistance of the planning commission, we did explore all the aspects of it to make sure that everything would be in compliant. And I believe that they have recommended to y'all that rezoning was appropriate. So, we'd just like to ask y'all to take it up and make the final determination on this two parcels.
So, this would be rezoning this property from R1 to C3. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Light, on this? Hearing none, we'll put that on next week's meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Number five, discussing changing of the lifeguard pay. Bree, Mr. Wood, which one of y'all want to talk about that?
Good evening. Thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight. We had tried working through some numbers through the budget process and we were hoping to... Minimum wage has been $7.25 since 2009 and that's where our lifeguard pay has been for at least that much for about 12 years. So, we are approaching you requesting to bump them up to $9 an hour for this next budget year, which will add approximately $5,000 to our current budget.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Wood, on this?
I know we had our packet and we've all looked at it and we looked at different numbers for $8.50 or $9. And so, I know that's something we'll have to discuss and the... I know we looked at $9, but the problem with the $9 was the snowball effect. If you go all the way up that far, the other jobs that would have to change also. And so, we will look at it and bring it to next week's meeting as far as and decide on whether what price y'all would like to change that to. But it definitely needs to be increased to try to get you some workers down there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Wood? We'll put that on next week's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, discuss the final bill on landfill sale number three. Mr. Leble?
The final bill has been held... withheld for quite a while. They were finishing up some things on the tank and the project as a whole. But as of about a week and a half ago, those have been satisfied. They have completed and finished the tank area and so they have requested the final payment be given.
So, everything's been satisfied and any kind of other work can be maintenance-wise?
Yes, but now the warranty, the one-year warranty.
Yes.
The day it was satisfied, we'll have one year from that time. It's also under warranty for the next year.
Are you satisfied with work on the tank?
I'm satisfied as far as they can... What they can do, yes, sir. They got the bolts fixed and the leaks fixed and we'll go from there. The material used in this tank, it's for another discussion down the road, but, you know, I'm not real thrilled with it, but it is what it is. So, they have done what they're supposed to do.
Okay.
We paid a lot of extra money for a tank that we're not satisfied with. The way I feel about it.
Yes, sir.
But it is what... Like you said, it is what it is.
Yes, sir. We just have to go on with it right now, but it's... Everything's working like it's supposed to.
And wasn't there an issue with some concrete?
There was. The footer around the tank cracked. They came in and pumped that and the engineer signed off on it, on its longevity, the way it's supposed to move forward with. And they were satisfied with that and I signed off on that also.
Okay. So, far as the contract, everything's satisfied?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on that? We'll move that to next week's meeting then. Thank you. Number seven, discuss the Bynum Crosswalk. Mr. Little or Mayor, you gonna handle this?
Probably both of us again.
Okay.
We noticed last few weeks with the soccer games that had been going on at the Redcom, there's been, I think, one night there were over 500 adults at the soccer field. And one of the issues is parking, so they were parking over at Bynum at the cross and it's not well lit. So, Josh even mentioned it to me the next morning and he's been looking at researching some crossing lights. Additionally, and thanks to the Scottsboro Power Board, there's already... They've already put up some additional streetlights down there at the crossing. So, thanks to the power board for that. But, Mr. Little, if you want to go through the signs.
There. I think one's at 4,900 and some change and one's at 5,200. It's a push-button type of signal, so people that go up to it have some responsibility. It's not the radar detection. There's one that you can get radar to text a person, they can go on across. So, what we have is a push button and basically it's one solar power and one is AC power is what we have. It's not something that we can get in quick. It's like everything else, we're at least two months getting it in. And I've talked to the electric power board and they can install what we order, so...
That's great.
Which one would you recommend?
We've got the powers there.
Yeah.
So, we could go ahead and hook up to the power and I think it saves about $300. I would do the power.
Yeah.
If y'all choose to go that, go forward with that.
I know it's long overdue, you know, this soccer season, it's really showed out how much... How bad it's needed. And so, if anyone else doesn't have any questions for Mr. Little, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Alright, thank you. Number eight, discuss the HVAC issues at the animal shelter. Chief Latimer?
Good evening. Over the past summer months, we've had during extreme heat at the animal shelter, they've run into an issue with moisture in the duck work above the ceiling. And it created some mold on ceiling tiles and above the ceiling tile line. It rusted out some lighting, light fixtures. So, what we did, we had city maintenance personnel come and look at it and also an HVAC specialist. And they determined that they believe it's the duck work is not... Was never really properly installed or insulated. So, to resolve those issues, the shelter got some estimates to, number one, clean and remove the mold on the ceiling and tiles, replace and repair the HVAC duck work to mitigate the moisture issues, and replace damaged ceiling tiles and light fixtures. The total for all of that was $3,444. But keep in mind during that... They're wearing a contract with the county commission on that, so they are also responsible for half the maintenance and operation cost. So, half of this will be ultimately be billed to the county commission. However, this is above our budgeted funds for that. That's why I'm here asking for a budget amendment for at least the 1722. Get those things fixed.
Anyone have any questions on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move that to next week's meeting. Number nine, discuss the HVAC unit replacement at the police department.
Alright. This is another HVAC issue that came up. We had our biannual maintenance inspection at the police department. And it was discovered that one of the rooftop units has a heat exchanger failure. There's some holes rusted out in the heat exchanger. The company that does that gave us an estimate to replace or repair. You should have both of those in there. These units are particular units, 13 years old. It was installed in 2009 and I'm recommending or I request that the unit be replaced.
And we've got a quote here in your pocket to replace it. And Chief Latimer, I believe you're gonna get a couple more quotes on that also.
Yes, I will.
And you also see in your pocket that two repairs is gonna cost about half of what it's gonna cost to replace it. So... Anyone have any questions on this? We can't get the county paper to have this one either.
No.
Alright, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Number 10, discuss the surplus items for the police department.
Okay. This particular one is a seized vehicle that we actually got in a drug arrest back in 2014, but the vehicle wasn't actually forfeited to us by the court until September of 2016. It's a 1999 Pontiac Grand Prix, red in color. It belongs to the police department since 2016, but we no longer have any benefit or use for it, so I'm requesting that it be deemed surplus so I can have Mr. Wheeler put it on gov.deals.
Any questions on this call? Hearing none, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 11, discuss the retail recruiting firm. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everybody has now heard from the two different recruiting firms that have both been before work sessions. You've got two different philosophies. One is totally success fees, depending on what they claim. The other one's a set fee that would be shared among the city, the CDA, the DRA, the Chamber in Goose Pond. Previously, the CDA, the DRA, and Goose Pond voted to contract with Retail Strategies if that's the way we went. And I think, again, everybody's heard from both different options, so...
Are you saying that they've already voted to go that way? Now, if we went a different way, would they go with us or is that the way that they plan on going?
We'd have to go back and ask them.
Okay. Okay.
What amount of money are we talking about, the city's part?
The total contract with Retail Strategies is $40,000. My recommendation was to... For the city to take $20,000 of that and split the other 20 between those other organizations.
And this is per year?
That's correct.
And how many-year contract would this be for?
Well, it would be a one-year contract renewable for three.
Okay. And has this got... I know one of the groups talked about an 18-month afterwards and all that.
There is no extension. It's per year, year to year.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would like to request to be able to see a copy of the contract.
Yes, sir.
You know, the last one that we had, it was before my time on the council, but there were some things on it I wouldn't have agreed to vote yes on. And I would like to see a copy of the contract, see what we're actually paying for.
Okay. Anyone else have questions on that? We're hearing that. Let's move that to the next work session to give time to get that information.
Okay.
And we'll put it on the next work session and that would be November 1st. Give everybody a chance to look at that before voting. Alright, number 12, discuss the caterpillar contract for equipment at the landfill. Mr. Leble?
Thank you again. The mayor and I have been discussing this just a little bit. The two loaders, cat loaders, one's at the baler and one's at the landfill, run under a two-year lease agreement. We were gonna turn those back in after the two years and just renew the contract and then bring new ones. But when the two years expired, we were looking at market values and those machines were worth a considerable amount more than what they were allowing us. And I asked the mayor to just present it and let's redo the lease, keep those two machines for another two years. It would save the city quite a bit of money and they're in really good shape. We would just lose if we were to turn them back in because of their worth and what they allowed us from the beginning as the value of it. They're worth a lot more than that. So, what's happening by doing that, we have to go back through the whole process of the paperwork. That's why it's on your agenda to re-sign the agreement again.
And this would be the same amount as the last time?
No, sir. It's quite cheaper.
Okay.
It's considerably cheaper because of what we've already paid on the first two.
Well, that's great considering the price of everything that's gone up.
Right. And that may be why the value was so much higher than what they originally quoted us two years ago. That's why I didn't think it was our best interest to turn them in.
Okay.
They still in pretty good shape?
Yes, sir.
Do they even have any additional units available if we turn these in?
I can't answer that. I don't think so, but that's everything that I'm facing. Doesn't matter if it's a truck or a lawnmower, I can't find it.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Leble? We'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you. Next, we'll discuss the surplus items for the fire department. Chief Nichols?
Yes, sir. I hope you have this in your pocket because I printed off surplus and it was from... It's about lawnmowers and that's not right. So, I'm gonna go off the top of my head, but we... Well, I think I got it. If you can see it, I don't need to. But we did replace. But we did replace, we had some issues with refrigerator at this house and down at three, and a stove where they were just malfunctioning. So we replaced those. Refrigerators are decent, but they're not worth a lot, but I had several people around there, want one for the garage or something. So I said, let's see if we surplus and put them on gov.deals and give everybody a chance at those. So that's what I'm asking you to do. Two refrigerators and a gas stove.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this? Move that to next week's meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, discuss the job description for the maintenance coordinator scheduler. Mr. Congo?
Good evening. We're requesting to change the job description for our maintenance coordinator schedule. The, as it stands, it is the same job description that was used while the vehicle maintenance was under the street department. And we had to, the changes were, we took the fuel and fuel systems out of it because the street department manages that, the security and the keeping up with that. We took that out, and there was a few little wordings that related, that made it sound like you had to be a mechanic to have the job. And we corrected that to where it's more for scheduler and parts and clerical-type work. And that's pretty much all there was to that.
This job was originally under the street department?
Yes, it was. Well, you know, used to, the vehicle maintenance was under the street department. So, you know, since we're no longer under the street department, we're just updating our descriptions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this description? Here and then, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you. Have I concluded the work session? We'll move the delegation, anything, none tonight? We'll move to reports. Mayor?
I've got two or three things. We hadn't had a meeting since the barbecue festival. That was a huge success. I'd like to congratulate the DRA in Main Street, Katie, thank y'all. It was a great success. I think everybody, we had probably one of the largest crowds we've had on the square in a long time. So look forward to the one next year. Our paving is moving along pretty well. Mr. Little, did you have a chance to follow up with them today?
Let's start back to Moore and Bob Jones and hope to finish all of them.
Okay, very good. The Heritage Center exhibit hall opened yesterday. For anybody that got to go by there, it is really nice. I think it's going to be well-used. It's a good opportunity. If anybody hasn't been by there, they definitely need to go by and look at, not just the new exhibit hall, but everything that's there. Mr. Moore, would you like to give us some news today?
Yes, sir. We got delivery of our sweeper trip days, and we're a very capable team.
Oh, wow. Good.
It's coming just right to leave the starting fall, so it's going to help us so much get these leaves up and these gutters and stuff cleaned up. If you want to come to watch the work, just give me a call.
That's great, that's great.
We've got a lot to do. Cheers. Thank y'all, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stewart?
I really don't have anything. It is good news about the sweeper, though. It's been a while, and it's been a long road. But thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ash?
I'd like to thank Chief Latimer and the mayor for getting the police to direct traffic down at the soccer field. It's well, it's a good thing. There's a lot of people that cross there, and it's dark, it's pretty dangerous.
I didn't know if you were going to say soccer field or Starbucks.
Well, I was going to welcome Starbucks to Scottsboro. I've been by there about four times, and the cars are lined up all the way around the building each time. And then I too want to commend Katie and all her hard work with the barbecue festival. Every parking lot around here was full that day. I parked up at the Chamber of Commerce and walked down. You know, it was, like the mayor said, one of the biggest crowds I've seen in a while. And the Heritage Center, I went over there yesterday, and it is nice.
Beautiful.
It will be used. Scottsboro needed a place for a venue of 100 people or so, and that'll fill the bill. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I really don't have anything. I'm just excited. Last week was very exciting to me. Like I said, Saturday, I went down there by Starbucks, and I was able to see Ole Miss cheerleaders and band come through, and it was huge. You should have seen all those people getting out, going to Wendy's, McDonald's, and Starbucks. So I'm telling you, it was so nice to see that. And like I said, the barbecue was nice. I enjoyed the barbecue last week. And like I said, the Heritage Center, there's so much going on. We should be so proud of our city right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have, I guess, one announcement here. Due to only getting one name on the architectural review board, we'll need to put that out there again. There's two vacancies still. Of course, one of those must come from the Historical Preservation Commission, so if they could give me a person on that. And the other vacancy, we'll post that until November 8th by noon of that day. So if I can get a name by then, or get some names by then, we can vote that evening to finish that board up. So that being said, if there's nothing else tonight, appreciate everybody coming. We're adjourned.